On. Oh, that's okay. We're good. All right. Calling this special meeting to order on January 24th, 2023 at 7:00 PM. This meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only, and the written minutes and attachments will serve as the official record of this meeting. And at this point, I would like to turn it over to trustee Augustine. Do you want to do a pro call?
Sure.
Okay. Collabro?
Here.
Who?
Here.
Celeste?
Here.
Here.
Rubel?
Here.
In the audience is alternate Schrader and trustee Augustine. Trustee Sweattick is virtual. Trustee Sweattick is virtual. Thank you.
Okay.
I have some oaths to perform. To extend.
Sure.
Right. I state your name.
I, Joe Collabro.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the state of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a board of zoning appeals members.
Of a board of zoning appeals member.
For Hinkley Township and Medina County.
For Hinkley Township and Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my term on the board of zoning appeals.
During my term on the board of zoning appeals. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Tom Schrader.
Yes. Thanks, figure.
You could, but I think the virtual world really would like to see you.
I'll stand at the microphone. How about that?
I state your name.
Hi, Tom Schrader.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the state of Ohio. And will faithfully discharge the duties.
And will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of a board of zoning appeals alternate.
As a board of zoning appeals alternate. For Hinkley Township, Medina County, state of Ohio. During my term on the board of zoning appeals. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right.
First order of business, we need to nominate officers. And I nominate Joe Collabro as vice, as I mean, as chairperson for the year of 2023.
Second.
Okay.
You accept?
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay, let's.
Um, yes, I think.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I'll vote for myself. Sure, yes.
Yes.
Celeste?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
All right.
Okay, I'd like to nominate Jeff Hoop for vice chairman.
And I second that.
Second.
Okay.
Oh, you said. I thought you were asking for a second. Sorry.
Who seconded?
Yeah.
Joe did.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
And let's take a vote.
Okay, Collabro?
Wait a minute. Does Jeff accept?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other nominations? Nope. No other nominations. Okay.
Excuse me.
Is that a nomination?
I'm good. I'm sorry. My eyes are watering because I'm about to sneeze and I need to get it out. Thank you.
Okay, Collabro?
Yes.
Who?
Yes.
Celeste?
Yes.
Schaefer?
Yes.
Rubel?
Yes.
Okay.
All right.
Congratulations.
Got that out of the way. All right. Well, thank you, everyone. All right. The. All right, we did call role. The purpose of this special meeting is to proceed with the organizational, the organizational meeting of 2023, which is typically held at the first regular meeting of the year. That date would have been January 11th. However, since only three board members were available and present on the 11th, a motion was made to have a special meeting this evening for the purpose of completing the organizational meeting of the year. So we'll start off with the the organizational procedures. Does everybody have a copy of that?
Yes.
Before we even start, thank you, Lindsay, for getting that to everyone.
No problem.
Helped with the changes. So we, we pretty much, I don't know how everyone else wants to proceed, but if you have a copy of all the changes that we talked about at the beginning of December, I don't know that we need to go through every, each one of them, but if there's any changes from that, we can discuss it. I mean, are the changes that we talked about that are highlighted or marked up, I should say? Are those still acceptable? Are there any changes to the changes?
Uh.
Or any tweaking?
I, I got a few little tweaks.
Let's start.
Okay, on page two.
Two of four?
Yes, two of four. Number 10, I think there should be a period after the very last four words at the public hearing. It has a hyphen and a comma. I think it should be a period.
Okay.
Yeah, correct. Yeah.
That's fine.
Okay, on number 12, a second line at the very end to have the hearing reset. Do you think the word rescheduled would be a little bit better?
One person has just had a decision of less than five board members.
I'm sorry, we hold one second. We need to mute and unmute again. And go ahead.
Okay.
So on the second line, the last two words are hearing reset. Do you think the word rescheduled would? Uh, 12, the second line, the last two words say hearing reset.
Okay.
Rescheduled, I think would be better than reset.
I think I agree.
That's fine. Yeah, that's fine. Rescheduled.
Right. Okay, on number 13, I just got a question mark. We'll come back to that. Let me look at that over a little bit more. On 17, we have the word is twice right after.
Yeah.
Yeah. Get rid of one of the is's. And then let me go back and read that.
13?
13 again and see why I'm.
Oh.
There's. I think it had to do with the 30 yards, side yard setback possibly.
I think maybe the fact is that we could do it less.
That's exactly.
Less versus more. That's not, it's not, it's not specified in here.
Yeah, and that, that's exactly what it was.
Uh, maybe it should state something that, then at the hearing, any subsequent request for change in the distance for.
That is less than.
For reduction.
Yeah, less than, or less than.
Subsequent requests for reduction. How about instead of change?
Yeah, reduction.
For reduction.
Yeah, reduction would be fine.
Request for reduction.
Yeah.
In the distance.
Okay, and then.
Is that the intent of that? If you read that, if you take out this, if you take out the EG in there, I think what it's addressing is that if we don't advertise the distance in the original advertisement, and it's changed, we don't have to readvertise. I don't think it's addressing whether it's increased or decreased.
Well, the way I was reading this.
Well, if we, if they come in and they want more, we have to readvertise.
Yeah.
Cannot continue. But if they want a reduction, we can go ahead without read.
Read advertising again.
Because we're getting, they're asking for less of a variance.
Right, so anybody that's come up here and taken a look at something, and they say, oh, they only want 10 feet. I don't have a problem with 10 feet. Well, now all of a guy, sudden the guy comes in wants 20. Now the guy might object to 20. But if he's okay with 10, whoever read it and wants five less.
I get that, but I don't think that, that's, that's not what this is trying to say. I think that's what the intent was. But again, it just says if it, if it's unspecified, if the advertisement is unspecified, and we change it, we don't have to readvertise. I think addressing, that's one point. A separate point is if the request is decreased, right? The variance is less, we don't have to readvertise it. That's a secondary point from the way I read it. And maybe I'm being much too critical of the reading. I don't know.
And, and the advertisements.
I read it the way you read it, too, is that if there's an unspecified request.
Should we just leave unspecified out? If a legal advertisement contains request for distance variance?
No.
Then at the hearing, any subsequent request.
But everybody's getting hung up on the word unspecified in the example. And they're just saying an unspecified side yard setback request versus 30. In other words, you're just not specifying it right in here in the example. That's the way I read it.
Didn't we say that the legal advertisements don't actually contain the actual feet request?
You know.
It's unspecific.
How about a very simple thing, and I may be too simplistic on this. If a legal advertisement contains request for a distance variance, then at the hearing, any subsequent request for a reduction in distance may be granted without additional.
Yeah.
Thing.
Yeah.
Just leave out that whole example.
Yeah.
The word unspecified.
Right, and then.
Makes it very simple.
Then they hearing any subsequent, subsequent reduction request. Then at the hearing, any subsequent reduction request.
We cross out unspecified, and we cross the, cross out the example.
Right.
And then I think, then it reads okay, I believe.
Yeah, but do we still want?
Oh, change, reduction instead of change.
Reduction instead of change.
Right, right. Does that make sense now?
Yes.
Yes.
So can we just have, have it read to them again?
So it would be if a legal advertisement contains request for a distance variance.
Yeah, let's put A in there.
Yeah.
Then at the hearing, any subsequent request for a reduction in the distance of the variance may be granted without additional advertisement or public hearing.
Which is what?
Yeah, I'm fine.
We do.
Yeah.
Okay. So just add where it says request for a distance variance.
Right.
The first line. Okay.
Good catch.
Yeah.
Is that all you had to?
That's all I got on this. And then as far as the conditional variances and all that, I got a few things on there.
Anybody have anything else?
I do not.
No.
Okay, so we have just those three changes and number 10, 12, 13.
And 17. 17, yeah, right.
Okay. So I don't know that we need to make a motion to accept, to accept the changes or?
Uh, I don't know.
I don't think so.
I think we really have.
To adopt the.
The changes?
The changes specified in the organizational procedures.
Okay.
You just made that motion?
Yes.
Okay. All right, so then we look, oh, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And so we have, that's for the organizational procedures. Okay. Uh, next, we have the public hearing procedures.
Is anybody missing page one? I've been to speak. No. Because I've got two page ones here. Just checking. One of three.
Have to, I have to step up to the microphone. I'm told Tom Schrader. Okay, well. Quickly, these are both marked appendix B. The next two documents, page one is marked.
Yes, yes.
And this is also marked B. They shouldn't both be B. The other one's marked A. One of these should be C, right?
Yeah. I only got two sets of, yeah, the things here.
So for.
So for the conditional similar and.
Conditional variance and zoning inspector. Which extra page is two?
And then on the actual appendix B, I'm sorry.
Yeah, this is what we're on video.
This is.
One of three, we need. And then this is. Okay, all right, go ahead, Tom.
That's okay. So for, um, so then for appendix C, right? So that will be the one titled conditional similar use findings, variance, and zoning inspector appeal, correct?
Do we want to start with that?
Well, that's three pages, correct?
Which one is that now?
That's one page. Well, stamp one of three.
That's why.
That's where we didn't have a problem.
On the, on the, on the pagination at the bottom, it says one of three, and it continues to read as three pages because it's numbered one through 26. And then appendix B is also paginated at one of three, but it's only one page. But it, it seems to break off at five, and I'm not sure that's accurate.
Okay, that's where I thought I had an extra one here. Yeah, it almost looks the same, but it's different.
Correct.
Use findings.
Yeah, because they're both, that's, I noticed they're both marked B, right?
Three. So that should be C then. The one for the zoning inspector appeal should be.
No, we, I think we already.
That's only expect your peel in.
Yeah, so the one that says, so in the center, it says similar use finding. So conditional similar use finding, I think we agreed that was going to be C as in Charles. And then the other would remain B as in boy.
Okay.
However, that, as I mentioned, that shows pages one of three, and I only have one.
Two and three of three is missing.
See, they look very close.
Yeah.
It says conditional variance and zoning. This is conditional similar use.
Findings.
Okay, and they both say B. This one says one of three, but there's only one page.
Okay, yeah, I got it.
Okay, that's when I thought I had an extra. I didn't see that.
Yeah.
And.
Page 21 and.
That's only one page then, for that similar use one?
Well.
No, it should be three pages. And I believe page two of three and three of three are the same in both.
Oh, okay. But so what you're saying, the only difference is the page one.
Well.
The change.
And really, the only difference there is the word similar use findings. Otherwise, they're identical.
Because we added.
Oh, so this should be thrown out?
What you.
Okay, so is this one with the similar use?
Public hearing procedures.
Is that taking, is that what I want to call it?
Wait, the public hearing proceeds, what we have. I think you have this page, it's a similar use finding.
I do.
You have one of three.
Correct.
Pages, right? And that doesn't have similar use finding on there. So I think that should be added on.
So this other one, should that be discarded then?
Yes. The one that you said appendix C.
Yeah.
There really should be no appendix C.
Right. So the one that with the original one here.
These are the procedures for public hearings, whether it's conditional use, whether it's a similar use, whether it's variance, or variance, or, or zoning inspector.
Okay, so the singular page that doesn't say similar use finding should be thrown out.
Right.
Got it. Now I'm clear.
So now.
Thank you.
What we should do.
Thank you for bringing it up because I was confused.
Yeah.
So the changes that were made on page one of three, where it says similar use finding, that was one of the changes. Because I think who's, that's a new form, but it actually, that is probably what is going to be coming up at the end of February in the, the public hearing in February.
Okay.
For, I should remember, who is that Melissa? Sunbelt.
Yeah.
And it's Sunbelt, yeah. So as far, so then the changes, the only, the only thing I, it sounds strange, the very first paragraph where it actually is in quotes, this meeting is being recorded for transcription purposes only, and then period, and it says personal conversations be saved.
Yeah, I, I put.
Until after meetings, so I thought, yeah.
I put in either, we should probably put in must or should.
Yes, there, there needs to be, so personal conversation should be saved.
I think so, should be, is a better of the two, yes.
So we're on this. Everybody on the same page now?
Yeah.
Okay. So it should be, that should go in there. And I think there's nothing else on this first page.
Uh, wait a minute.
Yes.
Uh, item number three. We're trying to get things to sound similar, you know, between different forms and, you know, different parts of our books. And if you look at on the conditional similar variance, one that we're talking about right now would be item three. But if you look at what we just went through, page two or.
Right, you're, you're losing, I lost you. Where, where are you at?
Number four.
I think he's just trying to match up language from document A to document B, so they're similar in appearance and text.
Or two of four, item 12.
So I can, what you're saying, I guess we got to find.
Less than versus if fewer than. So.
It's just about the, how many board members we have. I'm trying to find out where it comes up again because it said see page two of four, item 12 procedures. And so that goes back into, you know, I'm trying to.
Well, I think that had to do with the quorum.
Yeah, true.
But I don't think that's the same intent here.
Yeah.
I think the intent here is that even if we do have a quorum, the applicant can say, I want the full board.
Yeah.
I want all five, regardless of whether it's a quorum or not. The other one is saying that there has to be a quorum to conduct the business. I don't think those are the same thing.
Okay, that may be.
From my perspective.
True, I, I got to find the other one.
Okay.
So are we back, hang on a second, guys, are we back to the procedures?
No, he was just looking at that to reference the same language.
Okay, it is some.
But references same like, what item are you on in the public hearing procedures?
In the procedures, it would be page two, item 12. And I didn't get all the way through, but we're just talking about, you know, requesting or rescheduling and stuff like that. And I would just want to know, do you want three on the conditional similar variance wording the same as on two of four of what we just passed, reading somewhat similar sheet? Or, you know, changing one or leaving them both the same?
So let's go to the one with the similar. What number are you on?
Uh, the similar is page one of three, item three. And we're talking about forums.
What?
Procedures.
The one with similar use.
Okay.
Yes.
We're on the public hearing procedures, item three.
Item three.
No.
Right, okay.
The similar use.
If you go to what we just.
That is the similar use.
Which is number one.
Which is the public, which is the procedure, public hearing procedures for similar use finding?
Yes, yes.
And you're talking about.
Yes.
Over here at the.
I've been looking for that, and I still can't find, didn't find it.
Now, do you think we should have, basically when we're talking about forums, two different paragraphs, or should we adopt one and put it on both? One of the two and put it on both, or what? Or just leave it the way it is?
Well, again, I, I don't think, I, I don't think the intent of this is to say that there has to be a quorum present. Again, I think the intent of this is to allow the applicant to say, there's only three. Yes, it's a quorum, but I want all five.
Right.
That's all. I think that's the only intent of that. I think regardless, there always has to be a quorum.
Oh, yeah, there's always got to be.
Right.
Okay, well, the organizational procedures is more for us, and it has more of an explanation.
Yeah.
So I think that more of an explanations for us, where on this one, for the hearing procedures, it's just stating to them the.
It's just stating that the, the chairman will offer the applicant the option to proceed or with, without a full board or to reschedule the meeting before the full.
No, that's, that's fine. I just, you know, because we spent so much time back in December and all this, talking about this and trying to get similar language, and that was just my question. Did you want the similar language, or are you just fine with the two different? And everybody's fine with the two different. I'm fine with the two.
I like it this way because we're talking about a two different, two different items here.
Okay.
The organizational and the public hearing procedures, which makes it just
This.
dry.
Yep.
Yeah.
Less than five board members are present, where this one says if fewer than five board members are.
Is that what you're referring to? The one says if, if less than five, and the other says if fewer than.
And then the applicant, right? The applicant will be given the opportunity to have.
I think they're fine, both of them.
Yeah.
Whereas this says the chairman shall offer each applicant the option to proceed.
Right.
Is that what you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah.
The only reason I brought it up is because we were trying to get things to be similar. That's the only reason. I don't have a problem with either one, actually. Now, I gotta find my original note.
If you were unless.
We did, uh, change, reschedule, so both of them do say reschedule.
Right.
So that's okay.
Yeah.
I, I'm fine with the way it is, just simple, simple, it says, uh, chairman, uh, you know.
For this procedure.
The action.
For this procedure, it's simple. The other one, a little bit more explanation.
I think we're good.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy with it.
All right, moving along.
Okay.
There was, uh. We, we're throwing away this whole.
Okay, on, yeah, number one, you have quotation marks after number one. Yes, that's where it went. Thank you.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think that's part of, I think that's a.
Well, that's just clerical.
Yeah, uh, I think we, we talked about that. We'll do personal conversation should be.
Yeah, should be saved.
Yeah, and then that's the end of the quote.
Yeah, get rid of the quotation marks.
He's saying there's an extra quotation mark next to the number one. Yeah, that's all.
Yeah, so after that, I believe, I don't have any other notes over here, or I can't find them at this point. But I, I, I think that's the end of that one. I think I only got those two comments or three comments.
I think that's all the changes we have. The only thing I, I'm sure Suzanne will take care of it, on the bottom of each page, it should say conditional comma, similar use finding comma.
Yeah, agreed.
So all three pages should include the similar use finding.
In the footer, yeah.
I think that's all I saw. Okay.
I'm fine.
To have a motion to, or I mean, is there any other changes, Tom? Anything?
Nothing. Thank you.
So I'll make a motion to accept the changes as read.
Second.
For the public hearing procedures?
Yes, for, yeah, conditional variances and zoning inspector appeal.
Right, and please second one now. Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, that is five to zero, accepted with the changes. We also, we're not going to do the forms. I think we had, uh, I think the other one was the site visit, site inspection procedures. We had changes from last year. The change that we had last year was that the inspection of properties are generally conducted on Saturday, Saturday prior to the hearing. And site inspection shall be conducted in accordance with sunshine laws. We had it added. Otherwise, I could do, and keep on as I. And the only additional new form that Suzanne is getting together is for the similar use finding. And that is going to be similar to the conditional conditional use. And that, the similar use finding will also be a public hearing, and in a public hearing. that, the similar use finding will also be a public hearing, and in a public hearing, that it will not be during a regular meeting. Because according to Brian Richter, we should be doing nothing other than everything in a public hearing. Um, that's all I have. As far as organizational, anything else, any other comments, any?
No.
No.
Alright, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Alright, we are adjourned on June, January 24th at 7:31 PM.